As now in session, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Father for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is to review and approval of the minutes from the May 28th meeting. Are there any questions on the minutes? If no questions, somebody want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, they all in favor, refuse in the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes were approved five to zero. And do we have any public comment? I haven't seen a list. Thank you. Hey Diane, do you want to speak now or if there's something on you want to speak?
There's something on that's appropriate.
Okay, and we have Eric Soder. Okay, and I need to talk to you after the meeting. Okay. Our old business is the discussion of the proposed change the town's growth boundary and review of the timeline for the comprehensive plan. Sorry, I'm giving the wrong one. That's last month. Sorry. Our old best that you have still it's the discuss the comprehensive plan.
Would you like to consider going with Christ Community Church first and then the comp plan? Because I just say review and consider as agenda items.
Okay, that's fine. We can go over, we'll switch it up to the new business for Christ Community Church for the final improvement plan.
So this is the applicant is seeking approval of an improvement plan for the Christ Community Church, which is a 10,500 square feet building with 75 parking spaces and two stormwater management facilities. The site is 8.05 acres and it's located at 17550 Creamery Road, which is in the B2 or general commercial zoning district. The proposed impervious area is 1.6 acres and the stormwater management facilities address the impervious surfaces are a bioretention facility and a four bay. So a little more background, the site plan was reviewed by Planning Commission in July and October of 2022. And then the planning commission approved the site plan conditionally on October, in October 2022. So and it was signed, approved in March of this year. And the town also issued a conditional zoning permit on June 7th of this year to allow the applicant to apply for a Frederick County building permit. So the agencies who provided comments were notified on June 13th, not November, like it says on the memo. So sorry, make that correction. And there's a list of comments that staff had and I can highlight some of them. First, we have our case comments dated July 11, 2024, that the applicant has to address. The second one is the mismatch of information between page five and 16, but that should be an easy fix. And then the condition for the approval of the zoning permit was that all tap fees must be paid before this improvement plan is approved. The applicant must provide a floodplain study and obtain the appropriate permits from MDE or Maryland Department of the Environment. There are multiple deeds of easements that need to be prepared and approved by the town board, including a utility deed, stormwater management deed and stream buffer. The developer must also enter into a public works agreement and secure financial assurance through payment and performance bonds based on engineering cost estimates. And then there are a couple other permits they have to obtain, but that's not required until we're at the construction phase. And we may have additional additional comments if when when we receive an updated plan from the applicant. So these, these are not like the final comments that staff has. So with all those stated, staff thinks that this plan should be tabled to let the applicant address the engineer's comments. And if approved or denied, state for the record, yeah.
Okay. So any board member have questions on our three pages of recommendations or anything else?
What's that about the easement? Some guy easement across there, it has to be backed out or something. Abandoned.
Yeah, yeah. There's an utility easement. It just won't be, it has, it's the towns, but the town has to abandon it through a deed of easement. And that has to be approved by the board of, yeah, for board members.
What is right in the front of property? Or you won't know?
I did, do you want to? Sorry.
I can speak to that, to it.
I just hate your name.
Yeah, Joe Cece, I'm with Fox and Associates. I'm the project engineer for this. So the the easement that needs to be abandoned about, wow, it's almost 15 years ago now. The town replaced the sewer on Creamery Road. And this is the old sewer easement that goes, it cuts diagonally across this property. So the sewer has been relocated into Creamery Road. That easement was never abandoned. So that's just something that we have to do is do the documents to abandon that easement and record them.
I guess when they moved or put a new one in, they'll just let the other one in the ground?
They left it, yes.
Well, figured. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is the applicant providing any stormwater management facilities on the property?
Yes.
That are out of the ordinary or that are in addition to any other costs that they would normally pay?
If you have the plans. Let me see what sheet it is. On sheet eight, you'll see there's a there's a bioretention facility and the stormwater, it's labeled SWM pond. That's the water quantity control and the bioretention is the water, stormwater quality control. So being the, it be in the, it's in the back of the church, at the back of the parking lot.
That will be put in at the owner's expense?
Oh, yes.
And are there any credits then provided to the owner for putting in that facility? Or is it a requirement for the building itself?
It's required.
On creek.
Yeah.
Everything's right at the front.
Now, just a question on the easement since they come up, the regular easement. When I was reading, it looks like there's trees that you're required to put in within that easement. Shouldn't they be back further?
So the, which trees are you?
I just remember there was a
There's a, there's a forest conservation easement.
Now, this was one saying that you had to put trees in and I was looking, I said, hmm, we're good. Putting those trees inside of the easement.
So there's a we're required to put in a 25 foot public stream easement. So that's 25 feet off the, basically the top of bank of flat run, which would be, that actually goes to the town to do any restoration work. Then if you look at the plans right adjacent to that, there's an afforestation easement where that has to be planted with trees.
Does anyone else have questions?
I have a follow up. For the bioretention and the stormwater management pond, after those are built at the owner's expense, is it then turned over to the town to maintain or who is responsible for maintenance of that?
The, the owner. Frederick County will inspect them. I think it's every two years, three years, three years, the county inspects it, but it's maintenance is on the owner. These are all, everything is private.
For the, I remember rudders had put in some kind of stormwater management. I don't know if it was a bioretention and that was turned over to the town. Was that a different?
A stormwater was that was not turned over?
No, nothing at the rudders was turned over to the town, just because I did that one too. There's some of it is on state highway property. So state highway gets some of them that's on their property where they want to build a future park and ride. But everything on the rudder's site is private also. They did turn, we did turn over the pump station, the sewer pump station to the town.
So when that cement tower goes, a big expense.
Isn't there a barn still out there on this more?
No, they had to tear it down.
Okay.
It was required to be torn down to get site plan approval.
Okay.
Because it was non-conforming.
While you're here, can we talk about the tap fees for the property?
Sure.
Um. So I understand that the tap fees are like 161,000 or 164,000.
Yes.
For water and sewer tap fees. And the amount is so high because of the way the county counts the square foot footage of the space versus how many occupants will be in the building at any given time.
Yeah, it's based on the fixtures, the fixture units.
Based on the fixture, fixtures, which is then determined by the square footage of the building to some degree.
Maybe to some degree on the occupancy load, maybe.
So is it occupancy?
For the bathrooms.
Right, is it occupancy load as well as square feet or?
I think it's, well, your bathrooms would be based on your, the need in the building. But I don't think that, I don't think the tap fees are tied to the size of the building. It's tied to the fixtures.
Right, the fixture chart, which is then determined by a different
Yeah.
Regulation.
Yes.
Okay, um, the property owner had emailed the town council on July 22nd, requesting a reduction in those tap fees. So I wanted to see where we're at with that, what leeway we have, what may or may not be allowed in the code and how we can move forward with possibly granting an exception.
I believe that'd be a conversation with the town council and not the planning commission because we're focusing on the improvement plan itself right now, so.
Well, I think it said page two of the staff memo at the bottom, item number three. The fee which includes water and sewer tap fees was partially paid on June the 6th. Full pay, full payment of the zoning permit fee is required for the approval of this improvement plan. So it sounds like the tap fees must be paid in full. Is that correct? Before a zoning permit fee is issued, is that correct?
Well, so the tap fees have to be paid before this improvement plan is approved because the zoning permit has been issued conditionally and the condition being that the tap fees are paid in full.
I was really hoping our town attorney would be here this evening because I wanted to ask specifically about some of the ordinances that are in the town code. One is code 1632020, which is a hardship fee. I wanted to see if that would perhaps apply in our situation. There's also resolution 20-04R, which is a five year, which allows a five year payment plan for non-residential properties. And it also allows a waiver of up to 10% of the tap fees over that five year period. So I guess I want to figure out how do we, do we need to put this on the agenda for the commissioners? For the, for the next meeting so we can discuss it and maybe have the attorney there. How should we move forward with?
You can discuss it with the town attorney and then she can advise you whether to bring it to the board or not. I mean, I will certainly bring this to, up to her. And about the resolution, I believe that applies to businesses that are bringing in a certain number of jobs in town. So I'll have to check on that too.
Okay, yeah, I think there's several things in the code that we can look at that may be an opportunity to to reduce the fees if appropriate. So perhaps I'll reach out to you and the town attorney with the questions and the references to the
That sounds good.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Tricia, you have a question?
Yeah, does the applicant intend to move forward with resolving the comments that were given to him?
Yes, yeah, we've actually, we've started addressing them already. There were some that were on the, one of the last sheet, I think it was the second to last sheet, electrical plan. I know our electrical engineer has addressed his comments and we're working on the rest of them.
So the applicant intends to do all of this and yeah, before with the
Yes. They've actually, with the zoning permit, I guess that was approved or granted. They've already applied to the county for building permit review. So it's, it's moving forward. It's happening.
Is there an anticipated timeline for resolving these comments that you could, you would?
These comments?
Yeah.
Probably in the next 30 days. Yeah.
Any other questions? That's happening, want to make any statements?
I will just say a couple of things on here to go along with addressing the comments. We're working on the floodplain permitting with the state. The util, there's several easements that were mentioned that we got to do. Typically, we get through all the, all these comments, make sure everybody's happy, county's happy, the town's happy before we will prepare the easement sketches. So we'll get those, now that we've been through one round of comments, we could probably start formatting those easement sketches and get them to the town for review, get them to the owner's attorney. Those were the couple of big things. So yeah, we're addressing the comments and working on the easements that need to be done.
So you have any objections to table this until the comments are addressed?
I guess that's up to you guys.
Okay, so we have a three page of the comments, which in all my years, I've never seen us get three page of comments. Staff has recommended we table this motion until the comments. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion over you, just what you said.
The table of comments, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Yeah.
Pastor John Talcott, just wanted to make a point of clarification regarding the the county's requirement for different fixtures. I was talking to the architect today and it was actually more exaggerated than what I had thought originally. I had remembered a number of like 415 that I read on one of the plans. I could never find the number again, so I asked him today and he said they had taken our number, which was 198 in the sanctuary and they had blown it up to 520 by taking the stage area and putting 50 more people there, putting people in every spare space of the sanctuary area as well as admin northex and the hallway. And therefore the number went from 198 to 520. And then they required us to put in extra fixtures, water in the bathrooms, you know, toilet fixtures and sinks to accommodate for the 520 people. And so it was greatly exaggerated. And so I just wanted to clarify that point.
Are you able to put a capacity limit on the property to reduce the fixtures that are required by the county, a number of fixtures? Could you say capacity not to exceed 250?
Not sure if we can do that or not. I don't know. I mean, we, we are, we are planning to put in 200, 198 chairs in the sanctuary. We come together one day a week and we gather there in that place and then after, after we sing songs and all that together, then we, then we break up into different rooms. And so the maximum is what fits in in that room in the, in the beginning when we sing songs together. And so
And they're saying 520 people will fit in the sanctuary or the sanctuary and all the meeting rooms combined?
And the, and the northex outside coming into it as well as the hallway around. And so it's on.
So how many facilities do you have to have for them or they're telling you, you know?
I don't remember the number. It's, it's not a whole lot, but it's like twice what we had, I think.
I just remember when we helped build the golden crown Frederick, they had very little bathroom and I couldn't understand why. We had seating for like 350 to 400 people.
Right, right. Yes, I think what we're, what we're dealing with really is to coin the phrase from, you know, the COVID areas unprecedented, you know? How many churches do we build in the community that are, you know, having an impact fee when we're open one day a week? You know, so it's a unique situation.
Yeah. And capacity is normally, right? Yeah, capacity is typically drawn from the fire marshal. Is there the ones that say you can't go over X? Because that's their safety plan.
Right.
So I know you've been through the long push it, trying to make this and I appreciate that. Do you have any objections to table this while the address?
All the things, that's fine.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I know you've been through a lot to
Getting used to hurry, hurry and wait.
Yeah.
Hurry and wait.
Okay. Diane, you wanted to say something before we?
Yeah, just a comment.
Hello, Diane Walbrecker, 535 West Main Street. Thank goodness the electricity is back on now. Anyway. I just wanted to, to lay this out there. This has nothing to do with any of the comments that I know, but I just wanted to ask the question. I deal a lot with hazard mitigation practices across the United States and there are so many more new ideas that are coming forth in hazard mitigation practices that are nature-based solutions for floodplain management. So I was just hoping that the architect and the owner and the town is working with the state hazard mitigation officer and the regional hazard mitigation officer who may be able to come up with some innovative practices that can help with mitigation and floodplain management in the area. So that's it.
So I think it's Pastor John, he probably say this because FEMA keeps adjusting where the floodplain is. Over the years, it's kept being adjusted. So they have adjusted as that floodplain has reached out. And one of the things now is the 100 year floodplain that they need to address. So they've been pretty good about every time that's been addressed. I think it's been three times since this process has started. The floodplain has changed.
Right.
So
We had to wait for that in COVID.
Right.
Calls it to stall.
Yeah.
The updates and then we had to wait for that and then had to wait for this and wait for that.
Yeah, so the floodplain lines keep changing.
Right.
That's why I remember when it started, it was like one place and they moved and then they came again in the flood.
Right.
It kept running into that. But I think we're safe probably tabling this till all the comments are addressed. And one of those is the 100 year floodplain issue. Otherwise, I think it'd be just too many conditions to approve it at this point. So we had a motion to approve. Do we have a second to approve tabling it?
Yeah, a second, yeah.
Okay, so all in favor of tabling this? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved five to zero. Okay, now we go back to the comprehensive plan staff.
So I wanted to take the opportunity to present the proposed growth boundary and the growth opportunity area. The concept of the growth opportunity area was introduced at the last planning mission meeting by Mr. Eric Soder. A town resident with extensive experience in the field of planning and a key contributor to the process of the town comprehensive plan update. The staff's just changing the current growth boundary to include a number of properties near track road and in order to allow certain properties without sewer service to connect to the town's water system, water and sewer system. And so the growth boundary does its establish areas that can be annexed. And then the growth opportunity area is a secondary growth tier that extends a quarter or a third of a mile as a buffer to the growth boundary. And this area is not property specific and most land within the growth boundary would be developed before expanding to the growth opportunity area. So and the growth opportunity, both opportunity area would be naturally constrained by topography and easements and things like that. So and this also gives the town the flexibility to accommodate development opportunities without having to update the comprehensive plan. So if you have further questions, Mr. Eric Soder is here to clarify.
Do we have any questions?
The current growth boundary, that hasn't changed, correct, from the, from original maps? The current, I mean, I understand the opportunity area, but the, the red line for the growth boundary, is that the same growth, growth boundary that we've had for five years, 10 years?
So
Last comp plan?
Um, so the growth boundary that we have now is different from what you see up there. The areas near track road and was it route 140? Those are being included. That's the newly proposed growth boundary. The one we have now was adopted in 2021 and doesn't include that area. So this is a newly proposed growth boundary and a growth opportunity area that you're seeing right now.
Anyone have questions? Mr. Soder?
So just, this is the current draft growth boundary, which is just a few other properties. Yeah. Make sure I got that on Eric Soder, record. So yeah, just as, you know, being part of the discussion over the last couple of months and and hearing just the issues of having to bring in a couple of these properties for, you know, water and sewer needs. You know, it struck me that just working with other jurisdictions, working with the county, there are other ways that planning offices and jurisdictions have been able to give some nod to this, the area kind of outside of your formal growth boundary where you're picking and choosing exactly the parcels. Because sometimes these issues come up, you know, and a lot of times you see it certainly at the municipal level, it's public water and sewer type issues, but uh public water and sewer type issues, but there's always other things that may come up. It may be, you know, an economic opportunity um or just a natural extension, you know, a, a property owner may be, you know, purchasing one piece, but um that other piece right next to it, you know, maybe it's just a small home or whatever um is needed or it just um, it works out. So the idea that we talked, been talking about over the last couple of months and then I um provided, you know, um the one pager for consideration into your comp plan is to try to frame that, you know, and, and try to be very clear that this isn't hey, we're going to go out there and grab all these parcels, but as, as, you know, opportunities arise. Um, if issues arise, you have kind of set the stage so that way you don't feel like you have to go through the full, probably six months to update your comp plan just to deal with those things. You kind of already have acknowledged it, you would still be going through a very public process with annexations and annexation agreements, but you're kind of just setting the stage that you're going to be able to have some fluidity in that. City of Frederick has an almost an exact type of map now that they use with their comprehensive plan because they've been figuring it out over the years that they have kind of growth tiers, a, a tier one um which is their formal area, tier two, which is their formal area, but anything that has, is already in their water and sewer um uh accountability uh for how much, you know, water they already pull from the Potomac and then they kind of have this um kind of paintbrush, you know, kind of uh on the outside. So in case those things come up, so that's what's presented in, in, in front of you tonight and uh just give some consideration. I, I think it gives the flexibility. And um I did pull the map out. I do have like the county comp plan map with um dag preservation easements, if you want to see that. Because there are a fair amount of easements on the northwest side. And uh, you know, obviously there's some easements on the other side of Scott Road, so there's already some, some of those things are already going to hem it in, so even that area in gray, there are already properties that are encumbered that you're not going to develop, so just to give people that at home that may be watching or see it like, oh my gosh, we're going to grow like this. You know, I think it's really just on the margins and you may never use this and you may use it once in the next year and then never again, so um I'll just pause there and see if there's any questions.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Soder?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Appreciate your information.
Eric, can I see the, that map?
Yeah, so this is the um so I just did the county comp plan map with the land use layers around it, so you can see the easements that are kind of already in place. And you can kind of see that, you know, some of them are already being kind of heading in of by Tom's Creek and the rest, particularly out here, it's kind of like, oh my gosh. If you have the MET easement kind of to the north above Silver Fancy, so you guys can have that.
This would probably be helpful to have in the comp plan, too, just so people can see the.
See the easements in there.
Yeah.
Where the heck is the track road here?
Track road.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's supposed to be the track road, all right. Strick Allen's house must be in there.
Yeah, it's all the, the farm easements all over down there. Okay, so anybody want, make any comments?
Um, just to clarify, the part to be added at track road, is it the top left?
Right, the top.
Kind of triangle?
Yes.
Next to the yellow?
Next to the yellow, yes, and then the also the green.
The green, so it's the green and the area above the green.
Right, and, and, and the area below the green as well. So it's um Mountain View Road, Mountain View Road and then Wayne's for a Pike and then uh track road. The properties along those.
We may have it in our previous map paperwork.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Are we saying all these properties are serviced with our water and sewer then or no?
No.
I didn't think so.
No. This is just possible growth areas for different things and then if you see that light gray that would give us thing, hey, possibly that could be open to annexation without doing the plan once again. So that's why it goes out, not per property line in that gray, it's just drawn out as a group, possible growth area. So if that actually were to happen where say a development were to come in or something, then we'd have to work it by the actual property lines.
And I don't, yeah, let's say this property here. Well, let's find something that's in the growth there, in your growth area. Something up in the door, kind of on your, on the, into the growth area. Showing in your growth here, but just think of one extra parcel above it. And maybe that's part of the sale or that was helping it in terms of, you know, just how development would play out, transportation or whatever. It's not in that hard line kind of stuff, but here you have the ability to consider, but obviously things like water, sewer still have to take care of.
Where's the property at that? A party was in here one day, wanting to and accidentally one of the town, was a town meeting.
Those lawyers farm is out there.
Is that on North Eaton?
That's on the southwest side of the town. So if you think if you go where the road splits at the doughboy, the property that's on the south side of that split was where they were proposing a development, you know, and a possible annexation.
Which is in, in this era.
Right.
Growth boundary.
Yes.
Okay.
I think I just realized that the solid colors is our existing corporate limits. Anything in the striped colors is our growth boundary. We could annex in, in the future. And then, of course, the gray would be the opportunity area. I was trying to figure out where the corporate limits were, but I realized.
Yeah, it's all the, the dark color.
Solid colors.
Correct. Now, and there are some carve outs in there, you know, like, see the green for the cemetery, not within town limits. We have little carve outs like that. Or even though they're solid, they're not within.
Yeah, well, there's this spot there that's just east of that green spot you're talking about that's striped.
Yeah, it's low density residential. Was the idea over there.
But it's not developed.
Right, it's nothing there now. And I'm sure Diane would have a lot to say if that area was to be developed. It's at your backyard. But I think that the idea of the growth opportunity area serves us well, so it's, you know, if something comes in, you don't get in. Every place else is dictated by property lines, that growth opportunity area is not driven by the property lines, which is what has become the standard nowadays. So I, I think, you know, we need to come up with the standards of whether, how it's being done now.
When did they change that type of theory recently?
Eric, what'd you say, about ten years ago?
You know, I know Frederick County with their livable Frederick master plan started to do that in some of their growth areas. Kind of look at these quarters and just knowing, you know, you're kind of putting these hard and fast lines on property lines and when you really get into it, you don't know exactly where that, that may want to be. And then same with um uh City of Frederick, and I know some other jurisdictions have too, so. And you can, you know, if you feel like you need to tighten it a little bit more or whatever, that's, I think roughly around a quarter acre. Um, between a quarter and a third, you can see it kind of roughly twelve hundred feet from the growth boundary out to like Scott Road and just kind of did the same buffer around there, so.
Any other questions about this? You want to, go ahead, Diane. Can you come up to the speaker?
I hate asking dumb questions in front of the microphone, but I can't actually see this, so maybe it's my eyes, but is that where it says growth opportunity area? That is a light gray.
Correct.
When we look at the legend, it looks like a dark gray. So it's a little hard to tell the difference, but the growth opportunity area is all the lightly shaded gray. That's going around the outside. Okay, so that's considerably larger.
Right.
Than our growth boundary right now, okay.
That we just took for that, we said, let's expand it out in all directions by X, not looking at property lines, not looking at parcel, it's just.
Not looking at topographical considerations or floodplanes or anything.
Just nothing, just go out this far.
This is a possibility. Okay, thank you. It's hard to tell because the legend looks different than the map itself, so. I just wanted to clarify, you know?
Right, so it, it gets in that is, I think is Eric, you know, easily explained, if in our growth boundary, a development were to happen, but they had to have access roads or part of it was part of the sale or conditions outside of that, then there, and you know, that gray becomes, we can bring it in. Even though it's outside without redoing the whole comprehensive plan and voting. You know, what was the major change? Changing the comprehensive plan is not an easy matter, as we all know. Right, I mean, we've made changes in the past and it, it's a long, hard out process of what to do. So if we can think in advance to get around and address some of those things, I think we're better off and it was Mr. Soder recommended that and I jumped on it. I think it's a great idea.
So the chance to Mason Dixon line is the northern.
Yes, that's the northern boundary.
Say we're going into Pennsylvania next.
Yeah, yeah, Pennsylvania won't let us annex on there, there's that big problem.
I'm just kidding.
It's that north and south thing. Any other question from board members?
So I, I guess the growth opportunity area, it would stop where the state line is? Well, I mean, moving forward or the amount there that's drawn already depicts that?
I can double check and um see where it is. I think it, I'm pretty sure it's the buffer probably, especially up by track road is large, you know, that if you take the twelve hundred, it goes beyond that past Dave and Jane's, but naturally, um I don't think you want to go and try to annex into southern PA. Um, so yeah.
We would, I just didn't know.
Yeah, the, the, probably the um, just looking at it, the twelve hundred and fifty feet does extend into it, but your map will just be cut off straight, yeah. And the other thing, just to, that's important is to note that you know, you still wouldn't create enclaves, you know, there would have to be a contiguity for any type of annexation and things like that, so um it's not as if you're going to leapfrog and go out here to develop something, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not going to do the Michigan and leave or Washington where there's little enclave where you got to drive through Canada to get to.
And Najila, who would approve this before it ends up as part of the comp plan? The planning commission or the board of commissioners?
Planning commission.
Would make that determination.
Right, and then the board of commissioners still approve the whole thing or adopted.
Okay, yeah, so after we, we vote and approve the final comp plan, when it's all done, then it goes to the, the board for their vote and then it's off to the state.
Isn't it possible the board can overrule us?
Board can always overrule us.
I thought so.
They always get the final say, so if somebody objected to what we did and brought it to the board's attention and the board side with them and felt that we didn't give it due consideration or they have a different feeling on the matter, they can say no.
Well, it, it's all majority of vote.
Correct.
Always.
Yes.
That's what I thought. Like I have a couple, don't want it, but the rest, the rest says yes, and it's.
Yeah, it, it's typical vote as with everything else. Hey, anybody have anything else? Okay, it's at seven forty-five, I hereby clean the planning commission meeting over.